Commissioner, come in.
All right, the City Marine City, uh, City Commission meeting is called to order on Thursday, December 16th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Can we have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Thank you, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Claussen.
Here.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Mayor Verkaman.
Here.
City Manager Chapman.
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda with the following addition? We did a closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, MCL 15-268-H-Henry. Anybody have any discussion on this?
I'll make a motion.
The closed session should be A, not H.
A?
Yes.
A Adam?
Adam, yes.
Okay, A Adam.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Support. We have a motion and support, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And, uh, do we need to talk about Wendy being on phone, on the phone? No, we're good? All right.
This means all are a roll, roll call.
Everything has to be a roll call vote.
Right, okay. All right. Uh, public comment, anyone who's welcome to address the City Commission, please state your name, limit your comments to five minute, minutes. Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary. Go ahead.
First, I want to say I'm disappointed, I made a request to have something put on the agenda, it was concerning the email that the mayor had sent to the city attorney, the city manager and the city clerk regarding putting a disclaimer on FOIA requests, they're not to be shared with anyone, you know, along those lines. I read it out loud last meeting, but it wasn't put on the agenda, disappointed it wasn't. But I just want to let this commission know, the reason I wanted it on the agenda, our city manager has told me through an email that there's nothing wrong with their FOIA process, but this is the question I have to the commission. Why is it, when I put a FOIA request in for emails from our mayor, to and from, from July 1st, all the way through November 19th, I get the FOIA back, I get the emails, through methods I have, I confirm that there are emails that are left out, and when I question the city clerk manager about it, she tells me, well, if emails are left out, I don't know where they went, if they got deleted, they're, I can't produce them, go to the other end of the email, if you're for sure the emails were left out, and track it down to that person. Brought to the city clerk and said, you know, getting rid of emails is kind of like, is deleting public records here, they're official public records. The city clerk told me, I cannot give you what I don't have, because the mayor deleted them. So what I want to know, Madam Mayor, is why you are deleting emails? They are public record, and I'm going to be able to prove that you deleted emails because I didn't receive them. I'm going to get some of those emails, I can guarantee it, and I'm going to want to have answers from this commission as to why our mayor is deleting public records. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So every year in the Police Department, we, um, we do departmental awards, and I bring before you tonight, um, a citizen who wanted to put my sergeant in for an award. Extraordinary circumstance, I'll let Sue tell the story with her dog, and, um, then I'll go over the award thereafter. Sue, go ahead.
Hi, everybody, um, I just wanted to thank the sergeant for saving my dog. We walk morning, every morning, we walk along the boardwalk, and this, the morning in particular, I had my earphones in, my earpods in, because I was talking to my daughter who goes to school in London, and I wasn't really paying attention, like I should have. She is blind, and I went to bend over to pick up a piece of garbage that was along the seawall, and my dog went in the river.
Oh.
And, at the time, she had a collar on that just slipped over her head, and it came immediately off, and I did everything I could to get her out, I was leaning over the seawall, trying to hold her, and it was bad. My daughter is in England, and she couldn't hang up with me to call 911, so she stayed on the phone with me, and then I just, I hung up with her, and I, in my, uh, earpods, I had my phone call 911, and the 911 operator stayed on the phone with me until the police officer came, and he went above and beyond. I mean, now it's about 40 minutes later, I'm about ready to just let her go, the 911 operator said, suggested letting her go, because I was falling in the river with her. It was raining, it was a bad weather morning, and he saw, he drove by, he saw us, he left his car right in the street, ran to where we were, and immediately just re, calmed me down, and together we got her out, but without him, she would have gone in, and I would have gone in with her, because I, she's my fourth daughter, and she means a lot to us, so he went above and beyond, he just absolutely saved her life, so I believe that he deserves the award.
Thank you, Sue.
Sure.
Unfortunately Sergeant Backsdale couldn't be here tonight, he had a death in his family, so, um, I, I fully anticipated him being here, but circumstances behind our control, so, um, we meet as a, uh, I form a, an awards committee, and we, we met and issued Sergeant Backsendale, let me find it real quick, a Medal for bravery. Sergeant Backsendale is commended by, by me, his actions have brought credit upon the city, the Police Department and himself, he is hereby authorized to display the appropriate award upon his uniform, and this will be recorded in his personnel file, so he will get a Medal for bravery, and unfortunately, his last day with us is on Christmas, he's resigning to take another job elsewhere, so, figure this is the only time, I would have liked him here, but this is the only opportunity we have, hopefully he can watch this video and, and see how appreciative of his efforts we truly are, so Medal for, Medal for bravery.
She wouldn't be here without him.
I know we're not supposed to ask questions, but when did this happen?
In August, end of August.
Oh, okay.
And what's your daughter's name?
Oh, her name is Mia.
Oh. Um, and one, one more award that is noteworthy, Officer Kelly, please approach. He didn't know this was coming, he thought he was on security detail tonight, so I tricked him. So every year, again, we, as we get together, we decide who our Police Officer of the Year is. Paul Kelly has stepped in circumstances, when, when we've had vacant shifts, we know that we can always rely on Paul Kelly to fill these shifts. When he comes to work, he doesn't ever complain, he's very positive with his attitude, he goes out there and he does a job above and beyond anything I could ever ask for. For a part-timer to make just over $23 an hour, um, is, is just exceptional to me, knowing that I have Paul Kelly on staff. He was a traffic guru down at the city of Warren when he retired, and fortunately, we picked him up, he's a valuable asset to our department, um, and, and I'm proud and honored to tell Paul Kelly that he is our 2021 Police Officer of the Year.
Nice.
Thank you, sir. You are dismissed.
Thank you.
You can go home now, Paul, thanks for. And I'm all done, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Who's that guy?
Normally I have meetings on the same night as you guys, but we actually adjust every December's second meeting in the month, so, um, I just wanted to come up and give you, everybody, a update on, uh, what we've got going in the county right now. With the ARPA funds, uh, the commission found it necessary to give each one of the county commissioners approximately $500,000 to spend within the district on different projects, and, uh, so far, we've gotten, uh, I feel a very important project started with, uh, the townships on tornado sirens, especially with what's been happening in Kentucky. We've actually got 13 working sirens in the area now from East China, along the bay to Clay Township. We're proposing to add 15 with the, um, with Casco, China, Cotterville, Clay Township, and Harson's Island, because right now, we don't even have a, a siren on Harson's Island, which has been hit the most in the whole county, in the history of the county, it's been hit three times and we don't have a siren on it, which doesn't make sense to me. And we've got all the sirens working, which is another good thing, so we got all 54 in the county working. But, uh, with that, there, uh, we're doing a two-thirds, uh, grant with a one-third match by the local community, so, I reached out to Mike Ittrich and Joe Slankster to kind of touch base with them, you know, what's, you know, this was earlier before, when Holly was just getting in, I was letting her get settled, and I go, what, what are you guys missing? And he goes, Joe, and goes, well, you know we can't find parts for our generators, so, well, backup generator, well, then Mike goes, we could use one here for the warming center, or the community center, and, uh, I said, all right, let's, we'll get it done, so they're working right now and getting pricing for that from sideline, and I'm hoping we don't have to do, uh, competitive bids for it, I'm still working on some of the, um, some of the, because we're not following ARP, but we have to follow some of the federal guidelines with the funds, so, we're gonna see how that works, but, and the city Elgin X, we're working on an autistic, uh, park, Mark, what was the name of that?
Place for all.
Place for all, and, uh, they're also working on a portable generator for their lift stations too, so, um, and we're working right now with the ME department to try and help the police departments out by getting more investigators to free up some time for our guys on, uh, so they don't have to spend, what, up to two to three hours per investigation, Jim?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, that's still a work in progress, and I think we're a ways out on that, but we're working on that, and, uh, we've got some communication issues we're working on, and we haven't resolved that either with the central dispatch, but hopefully, we can get some further with the booster going in, in Marine City, so, anybody's got any questions about the county right now? I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Rosely Squires, 211 Michigan, uh, you know, there's a lot of bad news out there, there's bad news in here, there's, seems to be a lot of bad news, but, you know, we're eight days away from Christmas, and one thing about Christmas is, uh, there was good news the night that our Savior was born, that the angels appeared to the shepherds and said, um, fear not, for behold, the, of good tidings, um, our Savior is born, and, um, one of the things that they said that, you know, that there would be peace on earth, goodwill to men, and, uh, that peace is a peace that passes all understanding, not only does it pass all understanding, it bypasses all understanding. I've had a very tragic six weeks, and I can really say that, um, my faith in God, and, um, that, uh, Jesus has been with me, and that, uh, that peace, the peace of Christmas, the peace that the angels said would come, the peace that bypasses all understanding, is really alive and well, and, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to God, and just want to really tell people that he's real, and it is out there. Maybe that seems inappropriate to say at this time, but, um, for anybody that knows me personally, you know exactly what I'm talking about, that I've really gone through a rough six weeks, I'll never understand it as, probably as long as I live, but, it's not, it doesn't, it's not necessary for me to understand, it says, and, it says in the scripture, um, to lean not on our own understanding, in all our neat ways acknowledge him, and he will direct our paths, and I believe that I don't have to lean on my own understanding, because I'll never understand it, but that, uh, the peace that bypasses all understanding is present in my life. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, moving on, can I have a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of December 2nd, 2021?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support, any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Um, yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the City Commission closed session meeting minutes of December 2nd, 2021?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support, there is no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Must abstain, as I was not present.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda, I've got a couple items, 2022 meeting schedule, uh, the departmental activity reports, the Marine City Area Fire Authority run report, community and economic development meeting minutes of October 27th, 2021, uh, we have communication, and, can I have, um, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, letters A through E, support.
I have a motion and support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, financial business, we have expenditures including payroll for $662,494.22, can I have a motion to approve the expenditures?
I'll make a motion, we approve the expenditures including payroll for $662,494.22.
Support.
We have a motion and support, any questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we don't have any unfinished business, so we're going on to new business, we have resolution, uh, 013-2020, which is the temporary to-go alcohol cups in downtown parks, uh, this is a res, this resolution expires, um, January 6th of 2022, which is right around the corner, uh, does the board want to extend it to any kind of specified date? I think we should do it for another year.
We only did this due to COVID, correct?
Hmm.
We did it because of the bars for COVID, so.
Yeah, but it's, it's, you know, a lot of bars now, myself included, have to-go cups, and if you're licensed to do so, you can let people take out to-go, so, you know, if there's anything going on in the parks, especially in the summertime, it's nice to, you know, to be able to have them take, uh, alcoholic cups in the parks. So I need a motion.
I will make a motion, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Wendy.
I make a motion that we extend, um, resolution number 013, 2020, um, to, let's see, so effective, well, what would a year from that date be, sorry?
You could say the first meeting of 2023.
Yeah.
The first scheduled commission meeting of 2023.
There may be a lapse, though, because this expires now, on the 6th, well, okay.
Yeah, that would, right, if we make it effective tonight.
Yeah, that'll work.
That'll work.
I was thinking a year from now.
No, that's perfect.
Did you hear that?
Sure. Okay.
The first meeting.
So we're gonna, you want to extend it a year from today, is that what we're saying?
From today until the first regular scheduled meeting of 2023.
Three.
Correct.
You got the dates right?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, so we have a motion and support, uh, roll call vote, please.
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, I'd, to agree, argue, COVID is not, you know, totally over with, there's still people who are concerned about it, um, who would prefer to do carryout, as opposed to, um, eating, dining in, so in my eyes, it, it makes a lot of sense to continue it for an additional year.
Yeah, I'll have to vote against it, because I don't believe in that, I don't think it belongs in the parks, and that's my take on it.
Are we aware of any issues of it being in the parks?
We never had an issue last year, right?
We've only had one issue, the only problem that we truly had is, I don't mean to throw them under a bus, but the battle of bands, and it was one of those things where everybody showed up with all kinds of open intoxicants, and it was, we'll address that next year, but that was the only problem we had.
A little different issue, yeah.
In regard to your.
Because you know, every, the, the bar owner that holds the liquor license, you know, if they think somebody's drinking too much, they're not going to give them a, another alcohol drink, right, it affects their liquor license, so.
You would hope that would be accurate.
I would hope that would be accurate.
Well, but what happens if somebody takes that cup and refills it with their own?
They can do that with a slurpee cup from the gas station.
I think it's very yucky.
Yeah.
What was that?
Are the, are the cups marked per the? You know, people walk around with. Per the vendor? You don't know what they're drinking.
Yeah, yeah, if you, if you let something out of your establishment, it should say, uh, your establishment's name is, yep, it's got, well, I got a sticker on mine, yep.
Additionally, in my experience with that, having gotten some, stickers are placed actually over the top, you really have to carefully remove them in order to refill them.
Right.
So the sticker would tear, that would be an evident thing to anybody.
Yeah.
Clearly inebriated, that they may have refilled it on their own accord.
Yeah.
And it's still not legal to be open and tox, openly.
Correct, that is still outside of.
Yeah.
Disordance.
Right.
And it still excludes the beach.
Yep.
Correct, that was specifically cited in the, uh, suspension.
Okay.
Can we call a question?
Go ahead.
Roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
No.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And, uh, we don't have any items of the agenda, uh, City Managers' report.
Um, I just want to point out that I did have a, excuse me, a conversation with the auditor today, and I'm happy to report that they will be submitting our audit on December 23rd, so we will not need an extension. They were able to hustle at the end and get it done, so we're very grateful to McBride and his team, and the actuaries at Nye Heart who produced quickly for us, so, good positive thing there, and other than that, Merry Christmas, everybody, we'll see you in the New Year.
Good. Um, I got some questions for the City Manager.
Go ahead.
Um, a couple things, can we get the address for the city's webpage, um, we're still showing downtown, so we need to correct all our webpage to show that we're at 260 Parker. Um, next thing is.
Is that on Google, Lisa? Yeah, where?
Yeah, when I went in there, it was showing the old address.
We keep putting requests into them, over and over and over again, with different emails to try to get them to do it, so we're working on that.
Okay, all right. Um, the water tower, are we going to get that resolved with the, um, overfill issue?
Mike's handling that, he has been working on it, I don't know where we are as of today on it, but I know Mike is well aware of what's going on with it.
Yeah, I know, I had to report it the one day, because we're losing millions, he said that was the third time when I saw it, um, it's, for some reason, the warnings aren't going off that it's full, and then it's pouring out, and we're losing millions of gallons, and that's going to cost us a lot. Um, he said he's gonna, he needs something done within the next two to three weeks, I didn't know if he needed something from us, so, but, um, if anybody sees anything coming out of the big valve at the bottom of the tower, let him know, so that they can shut the pump off and stop the money. Um, are we going to have any kind of decision coming up soon on the COVID money? Because I know there's timelines for that, what we're going to do with it.
We, we are going to have to set, excuse me, we're going to have to set, um, meeting, probably one of either ours, or maybe a special meeting, just to discuss what we do want to do with it. I've been waiting for a little bit more information to come out, um, the first half of the money has been delivered into the accounts, the second half is not yet, um, we do have a portal, I just received an, um, email this week regarding one of the portals to go in and start looking at more information, um, but ultimately, we have until 2024 for, um, the spending of these dollars, so we have some time. I want to make sure we have all the information that I'm bringing to you to, for the decision-making, because I'm, the, how you can spend this money is going to be very strict, and I want to make sure that all the, all the rules are out there, so that you guys don't decide on doing something that ultimately, we can't do, we have to come back.
Well, yeah, I know we were going to do infrastructure, because that's the biggest thing, um, but I know, I know we have a certain amount of time to spend it, but I know there's timelines on when you have to specify what you're going to do with it, so I'm, I'm just wanting, okay, um, the last thing, last weekend, we had a power outage, and, um, this side, this time, it was the other side of the river, not this side. Thank God. And, um, they were out for 24 hours, and we had people requesting warming centers, and we couldn't get a hold of anybody, I know, fire department tried, um, we need to be more aware that we've had this issue before, when it's winter time, and a lot of these people don't have generators, we need to make sure that we can open up something for them for a warming center, and so that they have someplace to go, um, because they were out for 24 hours, and we're talking a lot of elderly in that, so, um, I know somebody tried to contact you, they weren't able to get through, but we need to have a better plan for that with all these wind events that we've had, so that we can open up something even in here, um, for people to come to.
Yep, I called back the number that called me right afterwards, and I was in touch with whoever needed me right away, and I was told I, I was on standby for whatever they wanted to do after that.
Okay.
So I was aware of it on, on Sunday.
All right, so I, I just, we just need to be, make sure that from now on, I mean, I, I think it's unfortunate that it's going to be, one time it's that side of the river, the next time it's this side of the river, and, I mean, one time, we were out for several days on this side, and we, in winter time, it's the worst because of the furnaces. Um, the last thing I have is, um, UHY's been here for over a month now, and we were supposed to get weekly reports, have you got anything from them yet?
We are not, excuse me, um, they are working very diligently right now on reconciling. They are in the same boat Mary Ellen was, that they're not comfortable giving us the reports yet, until they know what they're giving us is accurate, so they've been taking month, um, month to month, taking the cash receipts, um, going back through the expenditures, the revenues, and they're reconciling it within, um, the general ledger and BSNA, so that ultimately, when each month becomes reconciled, we can produce a proper report.
Okay.
So, um, I believe that they had just taken August, um, but there's, there are some missing pieces, so they are trying to fill in the blanks, it is taking them a while to do. Um, we are hoping, I had a meeting with Denise, uh, last week, she will be in again on Monday, um, and we're going to talk about where they are, um, USF even took a bunch of documents home last weekend to try to catch up, um, they are working as quickly as they can.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we eventually get something out of them, so that we know where.
Oh, you, you will, but they just want to make sure it's right, that's what you're paying them for.
All right, that's it.
Anybody else have anything for, um, City Manager? Okay, moving on to Commissioner Privilege and Liaison Reports, um, Commissioner Bryson.
Uh, just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendrick.
Um, I want to thank Dave for getting us that generator at the fire department, I mean, we really need it, um, and I think the sirens are going to be a very, very good thing for everybody out there, um, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe and Happy New Year, and also, I want to thank everybody, we had the paper sales for the old newsboys, um, I want to thank everybody for watching out for us and not running us down, and all the kind words that they gave, and all the money that they gave, people were very, very generous this year, helping out the old newsboys, and, uh, we really, really appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yeah, so just like to wish everybody a, uh, Yes, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Have a safe and happy holidays with your families and friends, and we like to celebrate. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Clausen.
The Planning Commission approved the many, many stories that came back this time. We tried to have it earlier, and he didn't show up for the meeting. He was, said he wasn't addressed, but we addressed it this one, and he passed it, so now that's going ahead on King Road. Same thing, the holidays are coming, you need to watch out for the kids running around and jumping around, and they're out there. So just everybody have a good holiday and a safe holiday, so.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, and thank you for your comments, Rosalie, that was kind today, and a good reminder for us all. And appreciate being on the commission, and especially at the holiday season, I think we should all just kind of take a little kindness and share it with all the people that need it in more ways than we know.
Commissioner Ross.
Yep, Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy Holidays. I was one of the people who had to endure the power outage and loaned my generator out to a few people, so I'm happy to do that and pay it forward. So again, every, yeah, be good to each other, have a great holiday, and we'll see you next year. Thanks.
Yeah. We did another Santa drive around on Tuesday, December, what date was that, the 7th?
7th.
7th, where we were escorted by the police and DPW, and we had Santa sitting in the back of a truck for two hours. It was kind of a chilly night. And we drove all up and down the city. Santa got like so many letters, and it was so funny, I just got to share this one story. A mom called me and said that her son was asking her that morning, Mom, can you measure me? I want to see if I like grew from like last year. And she says, well, you know, they have like a little thing on their wall. And she says, well, stand up, and I'll, you know, I'll measure you. And he grew a little bit. Well, Santa comes by, and he says, hi, Santa. And Santa goes, you've grown! And he was like, he was just like, he knows, it really is him! Oh, my God, it was just, it was just hilarious. It was absolutely hilarious. Anyway, I know we have the parade, and that's great, and, and this just gives people another opportunity to, to see Santa.